thirty-two, I'll call the meeting to order. Um, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Paul, you want to lead this?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the Weathersfield Select Board Meeting, May first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, comments from Select Board Town Managers, Citizens, topics not on the agenda. Um, May sixth, this Saturday, nine AM at the Dan Foster House, uh, begins the cleanup day. Uh, th- there are green bags available at the town office. Um, I would assume that Dan will have some, or not, Steve will have some at the Dan Foster House on Saturday morning. I'm guessing.
Yes.
Any questions, contact Steve Aikenhead at Vermont Hill dot net. Vermont and Hill are spelled out, it's one word, Vermont Hill dot net. And that's Steve Aikenhead at Vermont Hill dot net. Ray, would you give us an update on the road closure?
Uh, a little sunny road between lottery lane and one oh six will be closed, um, at least for tomorrow, uh, maybe into, uh, Wednesday, due to, uh, washout. The river, the river rose, came down the whole valley and was going across the road, but we also have a culvert that has gone down around there. So, we're going to try to dry up a little bit so we can get in there.
So, closed for a couple more days?
Um, guessing, yes.
Okay.
Depends on how much more rain you get.
Um, let's stay with citizens for a moment, any, any other comments from citizens? Okay, uh, Town Manager? Select Board Members, any comments?
I, I do, there is some information I think we got from the BCA that got held, but I think that, that can be brought up or a little bit incorporated into the reappraisal, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more comment, but it's from Highway Department as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we usually noticed today that we did, um, receive ninety-three thousand dollars in structures grants. So, we'll be finalizing those over the next couple of weeks, if I could get a report, seems like more.
Uh, good, uh, structures grants, what, what do you use those for?
Usually culverts over three foot in size and for designs. Like last year, we got one, we did a design for the Green Valley Bridge of culvert replacement. Um, and for design projects or retaining walls and culverts greater than three foot.
You and Brandon worked together on this, or just you or just Brandon?
Both.
Both? Thank you both, great job.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments from anyone? Um, review minutes of the previous meeting, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes oh four seventeen twenty twenty-three, um, with corrections if needed?
Some of them.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on the minutes? Everything looks good to everybody? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes four seventeen twenty twenty-three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Melanie Sheehan, overdose awareness, you're up.
Okay. Uh, so my name is Melanie Sheehan and I'm Director of Community Health at Mount Scotty Hospital. Um, I'm here to just share information about public, uh, how public health is addressing the overdose crisis. Um, before I start, I just, uh, some of you I know and some of you I don't, but I've been here before. Uh, Weathersfield has a history of, um, protecting the health and well-being and promoting well-being over residents. Uh, Weathersfield was, uh, one of the first towns in the state to do a smoke-free parks, uh, policy. And, um, also the drug care banality bylaw that we'll be talking about next on the agenda was something that folks, um, look to Weathersfield as sort of a pioneer, um, setting health policy. So, I'm back here again to talk to you a little bit about, um, you know, substance use, uh, is affecting our communities. Um, substance use is not a character flaw or a moral failing, it is a disease that can be treated, um, just like diabetes are a disease. We, uh, Windsor County, Vermont ranks the third highest in the state for rate of overdose fatalities. We were ranked fifth, so we saw some improvement in the, uh, second quarter of twenty twenty-two, but then, um, uh, we, we went back up to third in the state. Uh, we do have the lowest ranking in the state for the number of prescribed opioids. So, this tells us that it's the influx of street drugs or, um, uh, drugs that are, it's really not a diversion of prescribed drugs. You know, how, how Mount Scotty and our community partners are responding to this? We've had, for multiple years, we have a Windsor County Substance Use Disorder Collaborative. It's a multi, um, partnership collaboration, people from the recovery community, um, our emergency room, local police, uh, local treatment providers, court diversion, probation and parole, uh, Town Manager Goldman came, uh, with his stigma, uh, project. And, um, we, we just have this multi-pronged approach to trying to address this in our communities. Uh, at Mount Scotty and our emergency room, anyone who wants to carry Narcan can pick some up at the emergency room. Um, so we do give out Narcan there, recovery centers are also Narcan distribution sites, Narcan does save lives. Um, we also have recovery coaches embedded in our, in our emergency room. So, if someone coming in with substance use disorder who wants to receive help is immediately connected to appear in recovery with lived experience to go through that, to walk through that journey. Um, we also in our emergency room, um, do medication-assisted treatment induction. So, people who are, uh, living with substance use disorder, who want to begin treatment can do so in that moment. They receive euphrinoprine, suboxone or other, um, substances, and then they are immediately referred to Connecticut Valley Addiction Recovery, uh, in Windsor and, um, meet with a, uh, treatment provider there. So, there are strategies that we would like to bring to Weathersfield. We have a, a really dynamic outreach after overdose efforts happening in Hartford and Springfield. Those are our biggest areas in Windsor County where we're seeing overdoses. But we want to make sure that we're addressing overdoses in smaller communities. So, I met with Town Manager Goldman and, uh, both of us felt like we didn't really want to have any conversations about strategies without talking to all of you. Um, you are leaders in this community and leaders often set, set the tone. Um, we have a culture that's, uh, you know, a saying, culture eats strategy for breakfast, right? Like you can set up all these strategies, but unless you have the backing of key stakeholders, or if not, everybody is on board with the tone of your message, then it, um, it can't be as successful. So, um, one of the things I wanted to ask all of you is, you know, I think one of the things that prevents us from, um, taking active approaches around substance use is stigma. Um, a lot of times, uh, we, we created this stigma-free language campaign, I was going to read this statement. Uh, using negative judgmental language to describe behavioral health, which includes substance use disorder and mental health, can cause disgrace or stigma and creates a barrier to getting help. We encourage everyone in our communities to use language that acknowledges the medical nature of substance use disorder and mental health, and to do so offers everyone the dignity that they deserve. So, um, I guess my question for all of you is, um, does this, uh, does the Weathersfield Select Board support human-centered, non-stigmatizing approaches to helping persons with active substance use disorder and helping them reduce the risk of overdose and connect them to recovery or treatment services? So, that's just something I want to leave with you to think about. Um, I do want to tell you a few strategies that we could employ here in Weathersfield. Um, we could establish a Narcan distribution site in the town. Um, there are harm reduction kits that other communities have been successful giving out after overdoses that contain, uh, information around treatment and recovery, Narcan, fentanyl test strips, ways to decrease the risk of, uh, fatality when actively using substances. Um, police departments in our local communities are, uh, utilizing OD maps. They're logging locations of overdose and then we're seeing aggregate data on what days, um, overdoses are happening more frequently, um, locations in communities so that we can mobilize harm reduction services, uh, service services programs to areas in town and activate, uh, peer networks for folks to get information out ahead of time, um, to prevent overdose. Generally, um, we're seeing that, um, thirty percent of clients who are using harm reduction approaches are actually converting to getting help and seeking treatment. A lot of times when we talk about these things, we don't want to, you know, reduce, you know, we, we have hard time, I think, talking about harm reduction because we think people just, you know, if they die, it's a result of their choice or whatever, but people really deserve help. And if we can save the lives of folks, there are people who, a, a, a fair number of people who convert into treatment and recovery. Um, sixty-five percent of people who receive recovery coaching after overdose are engaging further with recovery or accepting additional referrals. So, there is that conversion factor. And I think that's the main point of, um, me coming in today to talk about it. Um, I did want to share our, um, our, uh, campaign. Um, so we have a whole stories campaign of six people who, who shared their story about overdose. If you go to www dot weareworthwild dot org, uh, you can read those stories, we have lots of materials. Our, our vision for these lawn signs is to get people in Windsor and Weathersfield and surrounding communities to show people in the towns that we're non-stigmatizing and that we're open to the conversation and that we're safe places, um, to get help. So, I have some lawn signs, I have lots of promotional materials. Um, at Mount Scotty, we, and I'll leave these all with you, Brandon, you're the lucky one. Um, there's some Worth Wild brochures for the town. Um, Connecticut Valley Addiction Recovery has an overdose awareness and grief support group. Um, so I'll leave this information for the town. Uh, we have Treatment Works, Recovery is Possible, this is all of the treatment, uh, providing locations for, um, residents. You can scan it, it's an interactive guide, you scan it with a QR code and all the links are live, and just some posters about the Worth Wild campaign. So, um, questions, comments, thoughts, anything I didn't, um, oh, I forgot the most important thing. We also have overdose happens have a plan booklet. These are instructional, um, guides on how to use Narcan, how to recognize signs of an overdose. Um, the Good Samaritan Law protects folks, if they call nine-one-one during an overdose, they can't be prosecuted. Um, so these are often the, um, educational booklets that go out in our harm reduction kits. And I think you have one of those.
Yeah.
Right, so if the town wants to engage in any of these, um, activities or strategies for reducing, um, drug overdose, I guess that's my, that was my ask, and Brandon and I talked about this, is like, if you all agree that Weathersfield is, um, you know, able to have that human-centered approaches, and if Brandon and I have agreed like to work together, we'd like to do some of these strategies versus coming to each time and wanting to do something. So, sorry, I talk a lot. Any questions?
Not as much as me. Um, I, I do, I have, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, can you explain this stigma, uh, language that you said we want to stay away from? And I, um, I'm a recovery, um, thirty-three years in June.
That's pretty.
Um, so I, I, you know, I've been through quite a bit of stuff. And I, I just, I, I, I know what enabling is. I, I, I don't want to be in a position of being an enabler. Um, and I know what tough love is, sometimes necessary. So, where are we with this stigma language, you know, what, what type, where, where are we, what are we avoiding but with this?
Yeah, I think the, um, so the Worth Wild campaign was, uh, born out of the concept of not just stigma, but when people receive, so if we think about, um, you know, illness, a physical illness, right? You have an illness of your liver or an illness of your lung or whatever, right? Addiction can often be an illness of emotional health or, you know, not feeling belonging, feeling isolated, feeling ashamed, feel like you don't belong. So, uh, stigmatization can, can, people internalize feelings that their life, that they're not worth helping and that they're ashamed of themselves with perpetuated use, right? So, the purpose of addressing stigma, it's not really enabling, it's just, um, talking with somebody, uh, with human dignity, right? So, um, you know, you want to avoid languages like addict, junkie, druggie, right? You, you know, you wouldn't want to be called an ex-addict or whatever. So, what would you say? You would say somebody who has substance use disorder, who's in recovery from substance use disorder, just that kind of way to refer to somebody's situation without judgment, basically. So, I don't think, I, I think talking about people or to people or with people with human-centered language isn't necessarily enabling. And the, the, you know, it's not like you're, you are worth helping. You were worth, you know, if somebody invested in your recovery, they saw in you some, somebody worth helping. And that's, it wasn't like, oh, you can.
But there were, I, I, I guess, I, I just, I guess what I wanted to be clear on is there are some hard truths that need to be faced when dealing with, uh, recovery and, and alcohol and drug abuse. Okay, that, but that answered my question.
Okay.
For me. Any, anybody else have any questions for Melanie? Go ahead, Dave.
I would just advise you, Mike, that, that, the, the hardest truth started with you.
It, that's correct. That is correct.
And that's.
That is the hardest truth.
That is the hardest reality of anybody, aside from any name-calling or, or judgment. Um, most people know my son. Um, he's in recovery centers, he's in prisons, he's everywhere, went, we went to see him on, on Saturday. Um, his focus is, um, that people need to identify what, what they're in, but he firmly believes that this state is on the wrong path. Can't speak for him, but I know enough about what he, what he says. He says that the answer is not these safe centers where we, where we put people on drug light, that's what he calls it. Um, you can't give people drugs to get them off another drug. Um, um, his focus solely is on, and it's crossing the line between government and religion, is the church. Um, and that's where he's at. Um, and I don't know how any governmental agency can go down that road without having somebody scream bloody murder, you can't do that. But that's, that's exactly what he thinks. Um, I don't know if anybody has listened to the, um, the scanner lately for this town, but, um, it happened maybe a week ago or ten days ago or something, that our people that are responding to these calls pretty much came under attack. Um, there, there were four or five people that came to ring the bell at fire and, and we could not seem to raise a policeman and the person ended up getting handcuffed to the ambulance because Clermont came over to help. So, I really think that our town needs to have a discussion about how you handle violent behavior that they're being confronted with. The people that actually go to the rescue. I mean, the guy, I, I'm just hearing this, but I, but I trust who I heard it from. Pretty much attacked the guy on Golden Cross and made him incapacitated. That's not going to work. So, that's part of what I think the town needs to do is to talk to who our responders are to go to these places. It's not just as easy as picking up a can of Narcan and saying, squirt.
Yeah, and I, I'm not like offering solutions to really intense problems. I'm just talking about trying to save lives in people who are using, because our data is showing that when they are reaching out to people who are using, a third of them do convert into getting help. And so, for me, it's, I, I think that you, you're asking some very great questions. I'm not here to debate whether MAT works or suboxone's the right thing. I do know that we're helping people and we're saving lives. And that's what's going to get us out of this epidemic.
I also know that the, the interchange here exit eight is a very hot spot.
Right.
I mean, it comes, it serves as an easy access to come off of ninety-one to either continue to go ninety-one or Clermont, one or the other.
And I do think that's why Weathersfield does have higher number, like, we all, yeah, we know that.
Right.
Springfield, Weathersfield, right?
Yep.
And, and that rural nature of those exits, there's not a lot around them, I probably shouldn't have said that.
Well, there's gas stations, there's, there's a functionability, you know, if you, whatever.
Our parking ride.
Right, right.
Melanie, I have another question, uh, the legislature. Where are they at with, you, you know, one of the first things that happened to me, uh, and began the learning experience, uh, of the problem I had, which, it didn't, it didn't work, but at least it planted the seed, was the crash program. You, you know, you got arrested for DUI and you weren't getting your license back until you either, you know, went through a year and a half suspension, three years for second offense, I know all of this stuff, or, or you took the crash program and in ninety days you get your license back. Uh, and, and that's where they talk to you about alcohol and the things that it does to you and the, the, the disease and all of the stuff. Um, i- is there anything like that going on where, I mean, how many times can we Narcan somebody? I mean, are we really helping somebody that we just keep? You, you, and I'm not trying to stigmatize this thing, but I.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, and that's why we gather the data, right? Like, how many of people that are being, that are identified at the scene of an overdose, that are referred to our recovery centers, that are then recovery centers are following up and preaching people, and about a third of them are, are getting help, right? So, um, you know, I'm sure there are individual circumstances. There are programs like, um, what you described, like Valley Court Diversion, like when people get citations, they can go and go through programming and things like that, so we do have things like that, it's not really.
See, I also worked in psychiatry, uh, for about three years.
Yeah.
And when I was in the service, and there, there was another thing that, that you used to have, and that was a committal, where the state could literally step in and commit somebody, uh, to a mental hospital. You started by explaining that there might be a lot of, uh, emotional stuff that's seated behind this, and that's very true. Uh, but then the, the disease or the, the addiction, uh, you know, compounds that, doesn't really fix any of it. Um, so is there a point where we, where, where the, the state steps in and says, no, you're going over here? You, you need help and you're going over here, I, I don't know, I, I, I mean, where is the legislature on, on some of this stuff? What, what, do you know anything about what they're talking about or?
I, I know that right now they're debating, uh, safe injection sites, which is a challenge because it's not equitable access across the state. So, I think that there's some, um, advocating for people to not, to, to first of all, get some data around how many people would actually use that, right? Um, I know that Vermont has, they've, they've gotten away from what you described in putting people in jail to dry out or to cops or whatever, and the state has invested in the hub and spoke system, which is, um, spokes are, um, I'm sorry, hubs are where people get medication-assisted treatment. And then the spokes are, um, uh, for this, for the number of patients that are, uh, seen on a monthly basis, you're assigned, uh, an addiction nurse and addiction counselor. So, having regular meetings with folks and keeping them, holding them accountable for a treatment plan, setting goals. Um, and there's, uh, there's quite a bit of, uh, I mean, uh, hub and spoke infrastructure in our area. Our area hub is Haberdock, uh, Lebanon, and our spokes are, there's spokes in Springfield, City to Health, there's, um, Connecticut Valley Addiction Recovery and Windsor and Hartford. So, there is a, um, treatment system in place for people who are, um, trying to be successful lives and become off of, uh, overdose.
Paul, go ahead, Paul, did you?
Yeah, I, I just first want to say I'm, I'm for whatever you guys want to do and any kind of awareness you want to give and any help. That someone will step out and say, hey, I want help is, you have to go ahead and, and try. Um, you made a statement though about this, uh, doing all this stuff will help get us out of this pandemic of, or.
The epidemic, yeah.
The epidemic, I, I doubt that.
Right.
Quite honestly, um.
Maybe it's trying to help people in the epidemic.
No, well, you, you, I mean, you have, you have a lot of numbers on, on like who, you know, follows throughs and, follows through and.
Yeah.
And also like, out of those one-third, how many of those actually are still clean and, and not involved anymore? Um, it, those numbers are probably really small. I'm gonna.
I don't know, because I'm not like, I'm not in the treatment center seeing that, but I can certainly follow up.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think one of the biggest problems that we have, like, is hitting it off before it actually gets to be an addiction to somebody. I mean, our state, I'm sorry, is terrible when it comes to all this stuff. I mean, it's, it's, uh, we've got our own chief sitting here saying that, uh, he's had judges tell him, don't bother arresting him because I'm not going to do anything. And our chief says, I'm still going to do my job. And, uh, I mean, um, I mean, what, what do you want the state to do, make the stuff illegal? I mean, it's already illegal. I, and so, I, I think there's a lot of stuff to go on there before, you know, but this is good because there are, there are some people that want help and they're gonna, they need to know where to go, so absolutely.
Real quick, I've got an answer somewhat to his question, and, and that is that, um, uh, it was, it's one in ten, it, it, that come out of a recovery center and actually make it typically. And then when you group all them together as somebody who's, who's actually made it into recovery, what's the longevity of that before there's, there's a, what, what they typically call a slip? You know, we, you know.
And those numbers might have changed with all the infrastructure that we have now and the recovery, and then, like I said, average chapter overdose. I do want to share an analogy, if you go to the doctor and you have diabetes, right? You come up with a plan with your physician to, to cut out on sugar and, you know, eat well, maybe exercise, whatever, right? If you go and you go to opening day at villagers and you have an ice cream and, you know, you didn't, you didn't do that plan perfectly, but you're not a jerk. You didn't, you didn't screw up the plan, you're not, you're not a, I don't want to swear, but, you know, you're not a bad person because you slipped on your diabetes. But when we talk about people with substance use disorder, we think they should quit and we think they should do it perfectly. And if they don't, we treat them like they're jerks.
That's really.
And that's kind of what, that's what this is all about, is it is a disease. We may not agree of what the treatment plan should be, that's not mine to judge, that's not mine to say. If a doctor thinks MAT, MAT is a good idea to help someone get off substance, that's the treatment plan they come up with, whether I agree with it or not. But all I'm saying is we have different standards for people who have physical diseases and how they handle their treatment plans versus people who have substance use disorder, and if they don't stick to it, then we have a judgment about that. And that, that's tough, because.
It's not the, it's, it's really not the, it's, it's really not the same in your analogy though.
How so?
Um, because the guy who went to the doctor and was told he needed to cut back on sugars, pretty much only hurting himself, okay? Well, I mean, he's not going out, uh, either committing, the, the first crime is buying illegal drugs on the street. That's a crime too, but we're not prosecuting that, that's what Paul's talking about, okay? So, yeah, and then there are other crimes that tend to follow. The, the guy that, that's got diabetes and, 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 you know, fudges his diet, you, you know, he didn't steal the ice cream cone. I'm assuming. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that as the same thing.
Is the diabetic a human being that deserves more dignity?
They're both, they're both hu- human beings, they're just not the same scenario. I, I'm not saying that, that.
I guess I'm just, I keep speaking to the human dignity portion of.
Human dignity portion is, it, it's relevant, but at the same time, people that are suffering from this need a kick in the butt. They do, because it, it, Mr. Fuller pointed it out when I, when I first spoke. The first thing that it took was, was for me to say, I got a problem and I need help. And it doesn't matter what you or the legislature or anybody else really does. They're not going to get that help until they're at that point. It's not, it's, and even then, it's very difficult. Wendy?
Um, I just had a question pertaining to the, the first responders. Uh, do they do, because I, I, just having friends and, and knowing a lot of people that are involved in that and the exhaustion that they're facing, um, not because they want to be judgmental, but because of the fact that maybe the things that might have even worked in the past may not be working so well now. Uh, do, are they, are they maybe checking in with, um, with them as to how they feel about this? Because I do know they go to a lot of calls at the same.
Yeah, I think addressing EMS burnout is part of the strategy that this, this whole public health community is trying, is, is addressing. And we've talked to a lot of EMS providers in, in Vermont, but you're absolutely right, there's a, it's hard not to stigmatize when you have that repeated interaction and then it's like, you're trying to help someone and they can't help themselves, right? And I'm not saying there's a perfect solution, like this is a wicked problem and one solution's going to create another problem and I'm, I'm not here to say I have all the answers. I do think that, um, and, and to your point, Mike, I don't know, there might be components of that treatment plan and the hubs and spokes that we have, or there is tough love. I don't know if anyone's talked to Dr. Lord, but he will tell you like it is. And there is, you know, I'm not the treatment person and I can't assume that tough love isn't happening and I can't assume that it is. But I do know that some people who are in that system are getting help and are, and, you know, one of the things I think we have to recognize too, we've had a lot of overdoses recently with, um, fentanyl accidentally, like people thinking they're taking one thing and then they die. And they didn't know that it had fentanyl. And they didn't know that it had fentanyl in it. And that was like an unintended, we're not talking about people who are chronic substance users. We're talking about a housewife who took a pill and died and left two children. So, you know, like, there's a wicked problem. It's a wicked problem.
It is. Paul, I think Paul was first, then Olivia.
No, just quickly, I just wanted to iterate or let you at least know, or everybody know. Personally, I don't look at anybody, no matter what issue they have, as not being human or not being, you know, I mean, everybody has stuff, all right? One of the other biggest problems you have is not just the drugs, but mental illness has the same exact stigma. And it's a chemical imbalance and so on and so forth, so it is the same exact thing. And everybody, you know, I mean, so there's a lot more than just that. My main point is, it's great work that trying to help people and do that, but we gotta, we gotta hit it before it even gets to that problem. And the state is not, I don't believe, doing their job. Did you?
Olivia?
Is, were the centers that they're helping people lean down off of the substances that they're using, are those drugs free to the person that's coming in there that's also seeking help to lean down? Is it free?
I believe that, like every other medical setting, there are really insurances.
Okay.
And if they don't have insurance, I think that's part of the hub and spoke system. But I, you know, mainly, what part of bringing someone into a system like that is care management? And if they don't have transportation or housing or health insurance, you really try to link them up.
Okay.
So I don't, I'm sure that if somebody doesn't have the means to pay for it, they're probably put on state insurance and then the state.
Brandon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think, you know, going back to what you and Dave were saying, I think, you know, in my opinion, treat, treatment varies from person to person. I think it's different depending on, on the person. And I think that what Melanie's proposing is not the total answer, but it's one, it's another tool that we can add to our toolbox as we continue to reduce or make an effort to reduce and support recovery.
I'm going to try to wrap this up. I do support what you're doing.
I, a hundred percent.
Paul, Dave?
Is there, is there a, so is there anything, like, when I see, like, item six, it says unsigned, what is that, does that tie into number five, what Mel's doing?
Yeah, yeah, that's something that was done a while ago, Dave, and the board never signed it. It was adopted, but it was never signed.
Okay.
So, that's all it is.
No questions?
Yeah, but Kelly, you're in support of the, the work that they're doing, and we're in agreement here at the board. Wendy?
I'm in support of it. I tend to be along the same line as Mr. Fuller as far as treatment.
But, work together.
Yeah, we can also, as we further our plans, we can provide regular updates to the select board. And just so you all know, what strategies are being explored.
Yeah, and you, yes, thank you, and you can do that through Brandon if you want.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. You know, we'll just do a quarterly update.
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you for what you're doing. Okay.
Thank you.
Unsigned drug and tobacco paraphernalia establishments. This was language that was, I believe this was, this is a zoning bylaw, isn't it? Or was, what is it?
Yeah, it is, it's an amendment to the Weathersfield zoning bylaws. I attached the minutes here. It was approved, but it wasn't signed. So we don't actually have, like, a signed copy in our, in our binder upstairs. John Arison was on the board at the time, Daniel Boyer, Peter Cole, Lynesti. You were on the board, Dave. So I'm trying to see, you know, Mike and I talked about, maybe I attach a piece of paper to this and have the current board sign it, or how do you think we should do it?
Well, if you read, if you read under number four, which is after, I don't know, it was after the language of it, it did say that there was a motion to adopt this as in section 7.24, as written on February 26th. And it said the bylaw will go into effect in 21 days. It's obviously well past 21 days of 2016. So I think it's a done deal.
It is.
I think it is a matter of, of, I don't know, if we have a motion, you could warn it in this meeting just as a corrective matter or whatever, because it was unsigned. I think it would have to be warned to sign it, because it doesn't give any orders under this, under this agenda. Like, personally, I'm not just going to sign, I wasn't the one that did it. I'm not just going to sign on somebody else's sloppy work. I'm not signing. So it would have to go through it. Plus two, I'd like to relook at it, especially being part of the planning commission. I understand it's drug related.
It's already adopted. Like Dave said, it's done.
No, no, I understand that, but we can also look at it, because what I'm, what I'm getting at is, this is done in 2016.
Yeah.
I don't know what laws have changed, because the way it talks about stuff too, the things that it might want to promote, you can't, they're illegal anyway, so you couldn't promote them. There are things that are legal in the state, so now. Hold on a sec, if you can. So, so what I'm getting at is, without reading through this and looking at everything and understanding it, yeah, it might be a done deal, and that's fine, it's in there. What I'm saying is, I might want to look at it at the planning commission, because I'm, I'm curious about, there's certain things that the state says is okay and legal. Like, you're not going to be able to.
As I recall, when we drafted this language, we tried to walk a really tight line with this, because Melanie, I think you were, you were part of this. And the original direction was, nobody wanted these things in town. Well, you can't really do that with your zoning bylaws. Yes, you know that. And so that was the line we were trying to walk, is okay, how do we? And that's why, you know, they ended up, the law ended up the way it did. Have you seen the bylaw?
Me?
Yeah.
Well, it's right here. It was specifically done with, with reference to a business that was here that had a little bit of a license or not, a licensing issue that was within a half a mile from a school. This is pretty specific, paragraph 7.24. And it wasn't, it wasn't that, that a business could not be in town. It was the area in which would be exposed to children or daycare centers or something. So it's pretty explicit here about what it is. My guess is, like any other policy, this had to have three warned meetings, and there was opportune time to comment on it at the first and second meeting. In the third one, we voted on it to adopt it. That's my, if you went back in the minutes prior to February 16th.
It was actually a zoning bylaw, so it was hearings at the planning commission and hearing at the select board.
But it's easy to find out, because if you went back to January of 2000 or December of 15, and you looked at a pattern of what was taken up for discussion, you'd find this. This just didn't pop up and say vote on it.
No.
Oh, no, I understand that. I know the process of how they work, because I've been doing it for a while. I'm just saying it's already there.
My conversation with Brandon was, and, and what he's, what he's proposing is, is creating an addendum that addresses the fact that this was not signed by the select board at the time. And that we recognize that this is an adopted bylaw and that we sign it. And, just so that there's, and then I don't disagree necessarily with your point, Paul, of reviewing this. It is one of our bylaws, and we're in the process of doing all that all the time anyways. So we, you know, Brandon, you want to talk to this? I think Melanie, I think you wanted to talk to this? You're deferring to her?
Yeah.
Okay, go, Mel.
So this is a, in the prevention field, it's a buffer zone bylaw, basically saying that any, a store that doesn't sell products to minors cannot locate within half a mile of a school. And just so that you all are aware, with now that things have changed in the cannabis landscape and we have retail cannabis shops and things, there are other towns who are aware that you all have passed this bylaw, but we can't find the bylaw on the website, because it's not been signed. So it's really a technical matter that other towns with cannabis, looking for cannabis bylaws, you know, are looking to utilize, see, see some of the language and the process that you all went through, which is why this came to our attention, is people keep saying, where's that bylaw? Because we knew that you all had passed it. So it doesn't, like, it doesn't really go into detail about what's allowed to be sold or whatever. It does tie back to, at the time that this bylaw was created, there is language in your town plan that talks about maintaining the village character. I forget where it is, Brandon, but I can, I can send it out in this meeting. But this bylaw does, it just, it just basically saying, you don't want any adult-only products sold within a half a mile of the school that weren't already established and grandfathered in at the time of the bylaw. So when the bylaw was signed in 2016, we already have stores that are within a half a mile of the school, but they're legacyed into, are allowed to do that, because they were already in place.
Now, this does specifically tell about certain things that you can't sell. I mean, it does go into that detail in here.
Okay. I might be confusing the language in that.
And then, and then my other, my other point to this is, the way I'm looking at stuff and looking at bylaws, it's not necessarily the drugs. It's not like I'm, oh, let's have a drug thing right next to the school. That's not my point. The point is, it talks about drug and tobacco paraphernalia. There's nothing in here about alcohol, right?
I don't know. I, I.
No, so my, my point is, so you could put a regular convenience store close to a school, but they sell alcohol and cigarettes, right?
No, they don't go to, this does go into tobacco.
This is specifically drug and tobacco.
Says excluded.
Okay, so then, so then, then, like, the state liquor store that they got at Runnymere could have been right next to a school and been fine, right? Because there's nothing about alcohol. Alcohol is just as addictive as, as other stuff. So what I'm getting at is, we're going to write a bylaw here. We should make sure we look at it and put all those things in it. And up that ante, focusing on, I mean, it even talks about cocaine.
And I don't, I don't quite honestly disagree with venturing into that. But we have a, just a, we have a problem here that's a technical issue, as Melanie pointed out. It's an easy solution.
Absolutely. No, it's, it's a bylaw. It's already there. It's already there. So Brandon, you're going to have our Lanius Administrator update that immediately with this?
What are you, I hear that question, but the question before that is the addendum. Do you have that ready for signatures or not?
We'd need to have it at a warned meeting, like Dave was saying. So at the next meeting, vote to sign it, and then we'll have that addendum.
Okay. Have you reached out to the town's attorney on ability to do that? Are we okay within that, to do that? Let's get that done, too.
I mean, I would assume that, just recognizing that it was approved and signing an addendum would be legal. But I can't, I'm trying to limit the amount that I use town.
Everybody okay?
I also agree with Dave about the fact that it states in the minutes, and when it, in fact, it takes effect and it was voted on.
Yeah.
And also, we've also done exactly what we're doing with this, with the other bylaws from all the messed up zoning bylaws that we had with, from all these past administrations of things. So we already had DeForest and Lanius Administrator go in and then update everything based on minutes from select board. So we've already set a precedence of doing that, without going back to anybody and saying, yeah. So in my mind, throw it in there.
The way that I'm looking at it is just a document that has the current select board recognizing that it has been approved.
Sure, but we didn't do that with any of the other bylaws that we put in there and updated. So do we need to go back and do that, then? If you're worried about this one, why is this one so much different than the others?
Well, this one's unsigned, so it doesn't have a signed, like, it's not actually signed.
Other ones probably have signed copies.
Yeah, I'm thinking the other ones were signed.
That's the only reason we're here. Yep.
Yeah. So, so you'll take care of that. Any, any other questions on this?
Well, I just have a, a reference to Mel, if she could look up, because this bylaw does mention, and you brought up the thing about anything to do with cannabis now. It seems like we're on a kick on that. Let MAH go back and, or you can do this too, because I have a copy at home, because I get it in the mail. But the Vermont Department of Agriculture has a newspaper called The Ag Review, okay? Look for the copy in November 22, 2022. I think you can probably pull it up online. It has significant ramifications for growers, sellers, anything. And they're constantly reminding the people that are involved is that, is a Fed, it's, Vermont is still part of the United States of America. And all of these substances are viewed illegal. That document printed, and I'm not sure that the legislature has that copy, but they ought to, goes to great length to go in depth about what may, a person or a business may jeopardize in conjunction with doing business with these products, including all COVID monies, all loans that may be federally backed. Your bank, even these simple banks around here may have, may have a loan guarantee by the federal government. All of these things are now up for federal review, and they could call your loans due. Get a hold of that article. November 2022, the Vermont Department of Agriculture, it listed everything. And the bottom line, it said, if you want to be in business with this, we're telling you that it's, that it's illegal in America, but we, we love Vermont. Go get, go get a lawyer. That's what it says. So.
Paul, you made another good point, which is to, to review this. Back to the point that Dave is making, since this bylaw was written, cannabis for sale has been, and, and stores have been legalized in the state of Vermont, and it's not in this. So that is, that, this does need, it does need a call for review back at the planning commission. Absolutely. So, okay, Brandon, you're, you're good?
Yeah.
Want to do with this? Melanie, you're all set?
I'm good. Thank you.
Yep. Town manager update?
All right, so I just got a couple of things. We'll just start with Sapa. We did pull in all of the controls for Sapa. Olivia worked with Johnny over at Sapa TV, and they pulled in all the controls to the town of Weathersfield, so we now have control over both our part and, and their part.
What does that mean, pull in? Take down, or?
No, we, we basically, if, do you want to explain it, Olivia? The, the app that they installed on your computer?
Yeah, so they had it installed, app, so I have to go in previous to the meeting with Johnny. We do a few test calls, but pretty much I'm doing the sound and the video during the meeting, so I'm no longer waiting on Sapa to start that.
But, but it's still live on Sapa now?
Yes, it's live.
And Sapa appears to be moving the cameras remotely. So what they're doing right now is, they're controlling the cameras. So that's, that's one update. It seems to be working well tonight, and we'll continue to monitor each meeting. But in the case that sound or video is an issue, we have the ability to do that. Is that you? You're from Sapa?
No, she's, no, she's, you don't want to know. She don't want you to know. It's kind of funny.
I see, okay. Any questions about, about Sapa and?
One sec.
And the reconfiguration? Not Siri, Sapa. Okay.
Okay. Dave, any more questions on it?
Not Sapa, no.
All right. Roofing projects. So the town garage roofing project is scheduled to take place during the week of May 15. If it's raining, then they'll push that out to the 22nd of May. After that project, they'll move over to the West Weathersfield Fire Department. Generator projects, the Martin Royal Hall generator projects going forward on May 31st. So we have coordinated with Irving and are waiting for an estimate on that part of work. So once we have that estimate, we'll put it on the select board agenda. We have two site visits scheduled at the town garage and 1879 Schoolhouse. Dave and I did talk a little bit about other generator options. So we're going to look at these options and then also some other options that may be more, that'll fit the buildings, that may fit the buildings better. Overhead doors, the Escotney Fire Department. So after the overhead doors were, were purchased, we decided to see if we could submit a claim to VLCT to cover the cost of those overhead doors. And VLCT did approve the claim for $4,600. Minus $1,000 deductible, we'll get a check for $3,600.
Can I ask a question about that, Mr. Chair, or?
Yes.
Wait until the end.
Yeah, let's let him get through it, and then we'll come back.
All right. I attended the West Weathersfield Fire Department banquet to thank our first responders for their service. And several firefighters were recognized for their years of service, and I just wanted to mention that here. Travis Campo, Jordan Pajalio? Is that how you pronounce that?
B, Jordan B.
Jordan B. And Dave Picknow for five years of service, Ben Waters and Tracy Doffin for 10 years of service, Mike Wiltshire and Michael Spalding for 15 years of service, Josh Doffin for 20 years of service, and Ray Stapleton for 25 years of service. The firefighter of the year award went to Dave Picknow. This award is chosen by the group and reflects their mission and core values. The department also recognized Ray Stapleton for. Uh, the department also recognized Ray Stapleton for his time as chief and leadership in other roles. Uh, an ARPA update?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I saw you got an axe. Usually that's a gift, you know, of either some, you're checking out or retiring or, you know, it's, it's like a.
Giving you a hint.
There you go.
They call me immediately on Tuesday afterwards and ask where you come in and how the train is.
Uh, ARPA update. The ARPA meeting took place on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth at six-thirty PM. Um, this meeting was held at the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse, and basically we just put the chairs in, in a circle. We had a roundtable discussion, um, and we were just looking for any ideas anyone in the community had. So a lot of ideas were shared, and those ideas were compiled. Um, we are going to hold another public input meeting at the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse later this month. And then after that, I'm going to basically compile all of the ideas, see what state funding's out there to match potential projects with, and then we'll be presenting all of those ideas to the board. That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Paul?
Uh, just a question about the Escutney Fire, the doors. Um, obviously you put a claim in for VLCT for this. Was that the original plan to do? Or did we only do this because they were ninety percent of budget halfway through the year? So we're trying to figure out how to collect money?
So I think, you know, to answer your question, um, if, I think we're still learning how to work together, right? Because we just, we just put that contract together a couple of years ago. And the department should have come forward and requested that we put an insurance claim in first before purchasing the doors.
Right.
That would have been the perfect world situation. Um, but that didn't happen, but we were still able to do it after the fact. And, you know, we just continue to improve relationships between the town and the fire.
Well, finding relationships is a good learning thing because if they were still within budget, we would have spent that money. And apparently we didn't need to.
Yep.
So I think we really, I mean, where else does this happen? So I, I think we need to just, it's a lesson that we need to.
Yeah, it's good, good questions, and, you know, we have tightened up our internal controls.
And not, I'm not just picking on the Escutney Fire. This is just this. I just meant in general, like.
Yes. That, that's important. The, the department, that, that part doesn't matter. We don't need.
Right, right. Maybe, yeah, I mean, not that nobody's, that we're not doing the right thing, but it just showed that heck, we had a claim, and we, they accepted. So let's not spend where we don't need to.
And, and I will say, you know, back when, like, this room needed to be, um, we had an issue in this room.
Water.
Yeah, and Dave was like, hey, contact the insurance company.
Right, absolutely.
We exhausted every possible avenue first.
It was just strange that they didn't cover.
Uh, yeah, and that one didn't. And, you know, but maybe the library, there's, there's roof issues, like, that, that kind of stuff, so.
Go ahead.
Is there a list that you could share with us, what people shared with ARPA? Because that's kind of important.
Yes. So the list is, I'll have a full list for you on, at the first meeting in June.
Were there additional ideas that came forward out of the twenty-sixth meeting that were not presented before?
Um, yeah, I understand that. I think that's why we kind of wanted to just have a couple more independent of the select board, because the meetings do take a long time. I think we were there for two hours. Um, and it was just focused on ARPA. And actually, Ray was there. And, uh, we did, we had different, we had different ideas. Some of them were.
Nobody from the board went?
I did not go.
Can I speak to that for me?
Go, go, Paul.
Quickly, sorry. I, I didn't purposely go. I didn't want to, I wanted people to have, feel like they had a freedom to talk and not, oh, the board members are already here, and they're already, you got their mind made up, or they're already influenced. That was my own personal opinion. That's the reason I didn't personally go. Um, and I didn't want to weigh anybody on.
That's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
I'm just saying.
I would have gone and shut up, because, because I would have gone to listen.
What?
Well, I, I would have done that on purpose. Well, because that's how the interaction, but that's how the interaction with the, the community helps when you show up and you're interested in learning, that's all.
Well, that's why I figured he'll.
But you're, you're, so you're going to hold that list and not share it with us until a different date?
Well, I would, I just don't want to take up too much meeting time right now, especially.
I don't want to, I don't want to hold up meeting time, but, but to say, if there were new ideas, I think the board needs to be aware of that so that we don't get our minds wrapped around another project that costs money. That's all.
Okay.
I think you should forward us a list of, it was a public meeting. I don't know what the, I don't know what the purpose of hiding things would be.
Yeah, there's no hiding or secrets or anything. Um, I just haven't had opportunity to really drill into it and give you guys all the information.
I'm not talking about money. I'm just talking about an idea that we may not know about that might be pretty intriguing.
I thought we will. We will know. We will get it. It, it will be coming. Go ahead.
There's more meetings?
There was some really good ideas. I wanted one to detail because part of the process was we were going to put them all out there, and then there's some that would get covered by a grant, so we didn't want to waste time bringing it to here for an ARPA discussion. We know there's a grant available for it. That was one of the big pushes. We want to kind of get a good list that we know we can't get stuff for a grant, or there's not, no, no other money available, or we're going to try to leverage money for other grants. That was our view.
And we're still going to end up in a position of item, of prioritizing and, and looking through this and determining. This board's still going to be determining what, what to do. Uh, I, I, I think it's helpful because we do have a deadline that we have to get focused on, and, and that's, all this is going to do is help us get focused on that. Go ahead, Brandon.
Um, so I do have a list in front of me, and I'll just go ahead and brief the board on, on that list. So there's the Hoyzington Field Master Plan and Engineering. A generator for the highway department and a generator for the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse, because they have freezers over there. So when the power shuts off, we don't want to lose, you know, two to five thousand dollars worth of food that's in the freezers.
Let's not go into the definition, the, the discussion. Just read the list.
Tree, tree maintenance, the post at the Veterans Memorial Park, um, Martin Memorial Hall drainage, trails, mapping scenic views, digitization of town clerk office, clerk's office, an office restructure, and a contingency is where we're at right now.
What was the last one?
A con, a contingency. So like, when you do projects, you usually budget for five to ten percent, um, more than what it would cost so that the funding is there in the case that you need it.
We, we'll talk about that later. When we, when you formulate the list and we bring it in for discussion. Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I learned that the dollar number attached, so the eighteen seventy-nine was a, a generator for that building was a bit of a surprise to me. And I did ask Brandon about that, and, and obviously the freeze, you don't want the freezers to go down. But the number that he shot back to me, I think, I think the numbers of these generators are getting a little crazy. And it starts right here with this office. I mean, it's going to go well north of like forty thousand or more, and it's not even dug in the ground yet. So the number that I got told through the eighteen seventy-nine building was like twelve thousand dollars. I think these numbers are getting a little out of control for what the value that we could just automatically do and not keep our eyes off, including the highway garage, which we've talked about and, and fumbled around for six months. And, and, um, I think we should keep our eyes on the ball. The focus here for generators are when GMP happens to go down. I think that it doesn't take a lot of studying to do. In fact, I told Brandon I wanted to put a motion on the table tonight to authorize either him to work with whoever it was, the, the chair or him, to coordinate, to spend up to something like twenty-five hundred dollars to put the generator in the eighteen seventy-nine building right now. Not twelve thousand. I learned that it's as simple as a double throw switch, which takes the building off the line on a temporary basis. Remember, the goal is simply to, to, um, offer power when the building doesn't have power, which is a short term really when you think about it. We're not going to be feeding electricity in this by a generator system. The same is true with highway. It's probably the most, setting aside the both fire departments, which happen to be off, have the ability to be off the grid at any time, which are vital. The highway garage does not. Same thing. I don't think we need a study to do that. I think we should just, as a board, just step right up and just say, you know what? Put the generators in. I think, I think we had that discussion with the, with the highway. But when I learned about the eighteen seventy-nine, I don't want to spend twelve thousand dollars on a generator system for the eighteen seventy-nine building. I will spend, they've got seven or nine thousand generators all over Home Depot and everything. Heck, you could buy three of them and still save money and keep two of them new in the box. And just have an electrician wire the, the off-throw switch and get it done. It's that easy. We did it with the police car. We did it with the, we're talking about expenses that can be made. We've gotten that confirmation from Brandon and Steve Hyer. It's an outright purchase. And the highway, including this last flood that's going on right now, flooding my fields, Ray wanted to come over to my place and get diesel fuel at the last storm. So it's not just about like snow or something. I just think, I just think we ought to do some of these things and not study them.
In my defense, I just wanted to make sure to back up, like.
I know. No, I'm agreeing. I am agreeing. I am agreeing.
Did he give you any, any diesel fuel?
He was more than willing to help, but I didn't have to do it.
I didn't want to crank.
I've been wondering the same thing about, I mean.
The highway? The highway specifically?
Not, not necessarily, but, I mean, at our house, we have a generator that, it's not wired, it's not even wired into the house. It's just, you go pull the, pull the cord and run the extension cord, and a couple of things that you worried about, you're running. I mean, what more?
And that's what I do.
Going to run for six or eight hours, the freezers, until we get back on the grid.
What do you think, Brandon?
Does, 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 I, I'm more than happy to make the motion to get it rolling off on the eighteen seventy-nine and to give, and to give the ability for the, for Ray and the chair and the, and the, um, and the town manager to take care of the highway garage. I really, I really don't need to talk about this.
Um, the way I understood the study was first, put the shelf and tell me what size generator we need to run in the highway garage. And that's what we're going to base the size of the generator on.
So.
I, I didn't think it was any kind of a liberate study.
I think.
It's not.
Same thing with the eighteen seventy-nine house. You don't want to have to, if the power goes out, if you have a gas generator, you go down and start it. Somebody does. Kind of want to have a propane, probably. You're going to give at least five hundred gallon tank, because that's the minimum.
See, that's what I don't want to get into. I, I'm not going to support that. I'm going to support what I just said, and was very clear about. It's a temporary thing, just like many other businesses are doing. I don't want to do some twelve thousand dollar thing because I'm not taking my eye off the ball with the need. As soon as, we're right on Route one oh six. I mean, you're talking about the main artery. We're not talking about a sub-road out on the middle of Pike's Peak Road to get power back. That's going to take weeks. If you have faith in GMP, they're going to have power coming up Route one oh six. That's where the eighteen seventy-nine building is.
Anyways, once you get the size of the generator, figure out how to, what size can that be?
Well, but, but, but actually, Dave's not too far off. And, and a thought that comes to my mind is having a couple of generators like the milit, what you'd see in the military. They hook it up and pull it with a.
The fire departments have had them. They sold them.
You store them somewhere, and when you have a problem, your department gets to roll them out, park it, plug it, flip the switch.
The, the amount of the, the amount of the, the amount is going to deter, what is going to, how it's going to run off is the service entrance. If the eighteen seventy-nine has a hundred amp service, that's all you got to feed.
Right.
That's it. It's that simple.
Right.
And I don't know, but it's like anybody else. You're not going to run every single circuit board. This is like an emergency situation. It's not like I want to be like home.
It's going to keep the freezer going and the refrigerator going.
Exactly.
Mainly because, you know, there's, it's an emergency. What's that?
Freezer, refrigerator, furnace, and water.
Okay.
I, I assume you know, I, my husband volunteers at the fire job. I assume you know, nobody lives there, so if they lose power, no one's going to know. And I think that's going to add to the expense. We need an automated system. No one's going to know to run over and flood the generator.
Yeah, we kind of will.
We do have emergency management.
It, it, well, well, and.
You know? Okay.
I mean, other than, other than a life, isolated incident where it's just that building, yeah, we'll know. I mean, I'm just down the street. I'm going to know. And the emergency management coordinator lives next to me.
Oh, so you get an alert that you lose power there?
Yeah, my house is out of power.
Well, actually, actually, um, the emergency management person did say that the, that he's developed an app for the town. He is getting notified.
That is correct. That is correct. He is. Yes.
You're going to make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm making a motion that, that we allow the town manager to work with either the coordinator of the food shelf or the chair or whatever to, to install and purchase a generator system for the eighteen seventy-nine building up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
What, what about highway? We want to?
Yeah, well, that would be a separate one. Or I, unless you want to, I don't have a problem with, depends how much money you're getting into with that one. Right? Isn't there a purchasing policy you need to follow?
I think for that one, I would like the site visit to move forward just so that we know how big it needs to be and what we really need over there. Eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse, I think, is reasonable with what you're proposing.
Yeah, my, my only que, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My only question is, uh, as far as, I'm not so concerned about the, the food shelf either. The liability of if something, if the wrong, if something, as far as the, the highway garage, I don't know what goes into, um, what would need to be run. So I think that's, that one I probably would be a little more concerned because, you know, I, I'm not exactly sure who holds the responsibility if we make the wrong decision.
Didn't you say that one was coming up though? What, when is that happening, Ray?
Might have made, the meeting will make, might have made.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll wait on that one.
So I'll, I'll second Dave's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to, um, uh, have the town manager chair. Um, I, I, I don't believe there is anybody overseeing the eighteen seventy-nine building anymore as far as a committee or anything like that, correct?
You know, the, the town manager oversees the building.
Okay, so I'll, I'll work with, with Brandon, um, and we'll keep the board updated.
I, I think that John Harrison might have done some electrical work over there, so it might be good to check with him. So that included, you know, whatever had to, had to be done with electrical.
And, and so the motion is for us to go ahead and, and.
Spend up to twenty-five hundred dollars.
Up to twenty-five hundred.
To become from ARPA funds.
From ARPA. And Paul, your, your second is, is on that. Any discussion on the motion? During none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I got another motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we authorize the town manager, the highway superintendent, and the chair to take under advisement their May ninth meeting to service the highway garage and to solicit, um, I don't know about bids or about quotes. How's that? If, if it rises to the level that to, um, who, who is Brookfield Service? They're the ones that are doing this one?
Yes.
I was getting ready to think about just letting them do it, but I guess I'd be concerned about the price. So I'd, because it would, the motion would have to also include waiving the purchasing policy to do it. I don't do it any other way, but.
So, so.
So to authorize the chair, the highway garage, the superintendent Ray, and the town manager to move forward with purchasing the garage, I mean, the generator at the highway garage that they, uh, learn fits the garage.
Okay, funding from ARPA?
Yes.
And waive the policy or not?
I don't know. I, I think we should discuss that as a board, but I, but I want to get it off so that we don't have to come to another meeting. See, this is going to be, it's May first. May, that means May ninth, you guys get to go meet somewhere and get it done because we don't have another meeting until, what, the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, second's made.
Ray have his hand up.
Ray?
Generally, something like this, we get a, we find out what size generator we need.
Yeah.
And then I'll just start doing research and get three prices at least, and then we'll know what range we're in, and we just follow the purchasing policy. If it's under five K, or it's over five K, or it's under ten thousand or over ten thousand, the purchasing policy tells us what to do.
Right.
So.
But I think what, do you have a? I'm, I'm, really quick, and I'll come to you. I'm getting kind of the, from what Dave said in the beginning, that we're, we're trying not to spend ten or twelve or fifteen thousand dollars, but I don't know that that matters.
And I don't know what, what he's asking for, what size the generator that will be.
I don't know either until we have that meeting of the electrician to show off.
So we can.
We can run in the shop, so you can actually.
We've also had the discussion to, to plummet from the diesel tank.
Right.
So if we come back with twelve thousand dollars, we can come in late, at a later date to waive the policy. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, I'm still going to look at the prices.
I understand that. I understand that. I'm just trying to deal with the process moving forward. If it comes over the purchasing policy, ten thousand dollars, we can come back to waive that policy. Brandon, did you have a?
That was actually what I was going to say.
Okay. Good.
I'm, I'm still okay with moving forward. I mean, we've talked about this for four meetings in a row, so it doesn't matter whether we waive the policy now or, or whatever. He's going to solicit three bids anyway, or three prices, I'm sure.
Correct. Um, but if it's under ten thousand dollars right now, we don't need to come back here, correct? Did I understand that correctly?
Yep.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded? So motion's been made and seconded, uh, um, for the town manager, highway superintendent and the chair, um, to get quotes for a generator for the uh, highway garage, uh, funding to come from ARPA. I, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Do you want me to put the ten thousand dollar limit on that or just hold off on that? Just follow the policy, according to the policy, purchasing policy, yes. Thank you, Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, thanks, Dave, for taking care of that. That's a, that, that, that beats kicking stuff down the road. And that finishes the town manager's update, right? I mean, we did, took action within that, but. Uh, Town Highway ninety-five. Who's speaking to that?
Eric. John Kenniston was on Cook's Pond Road and brought it to the town's attention a while ago that there is a town highway apparently mapped on his property. He noticed it when, um, cars started showing up and wanted to get to the ball basket. I went up last week, Brandon asked me to work with, uh, Mr. Kenniston, so I went up to check it out and it is on some of our roadmaps through the state highway system. Uh, not all of them, so it's kinda odd, but it is in the state system as a highway road. T ninety-five, no name, and I think it's quarter mile long. It's a class four, untravelled, impassable road. He would like it, it's on his property completely. It touches Cook's Pond Road and it stops in the middle of his pasture. I saw no evidence of a road. It's all town pastures and hay field and there's one fireway in the middle of the field. If that is where a road might have been a long time ago, I don't know. I don't know why it's on the map. I don't know why it's a town road. Came up during the ancient roads and there's some history that anybody know? Let me know, but I don't see any purpose of, of a town road being on Mr. Kenniston's property. And he asked us if we could discontinue it.
Well, with the ancient roads, that law wouldn't qualify here because it is listed as a class four road. And that the ancient roads was basically for stuff that wasn't identified already by the town as something like that. It, there were, there were, there were things that were popping up in deeds. That being said, um, we, we need to go through hearings to remove a road, yes?
Yes. It's, it's not on the deed and it did pop up right after the whole ancient roads thing in two thousand six, two thousand seven because they redid the maps in oh eight. That's the first time it showed up on that. So it, it did, it did come up during the ancient roads to be classified as a class four apparently.
Oh, it did?
It must have because there was nothing.
I didn't think there was anything but the Crown Point Road that got adopted.
Three oh six.
What was the date on that that it turned up?
Oh, eight was the first updated map. They only update the maps every four or five years.
Okay.
So the previous map had nothing and then oh eight was there. Oh twelve, two thousand twelve, I really didn't, I didn't see it.
Okay.
On the map I have at the highway garage, but it came back on that in two thousand nineteen or eighteen.
Brandon, where are we at with this? What to do? What to do?
Do you guys like me to warn it as a hearing? You go through the process?
Well, it, it does, it has to do that. Um, have you done any research on this, uh, from your end, you and Ray, uh, on, on where we're at with this?
So Ray did research. He worked with Mr. Kenniston and then presented that to me and from there I put it on the agenda. I mean, it, it is a road through his property that doesn't go anywhere.
Well, it's class four and it's unidentifiable.
It's not, it's not, no evidence of road based or anything there at all.
Okay. So, so says, Dave, go ahead.
I feel, I have a question. So when you started the whole thing, you said that a couple of cars showed up on your property and wanted to drive through, John?
It was mainly the, um, the mapping companies were making my driveway Town Highway ninety-five.
The, so I'm a little confused. The mapping, what, who's mapping company?
Google Maps.
Ezra and Google.
Turn left here.
Both have it. So it shows up on the state highway map. So then they go around looking for where this Town Highway ninety-five is.
Yep.
And you go looking by mileage from the top of Cook's Pond Road down to where this road is supposed to exist. There's absolutely no evidence, but my driveway looks like.
It might be.
So when you get to the end of your property, is there Cook's Pond Road? Is there, is there a road that comes to the end? You're right, Mike. I, I absolutely know this. There'll have to be a hearing process.
Go on, goes down to a class four road at, your, your property. So he, his driveway's off Cook's Pond, but it's also stating that halfway or so between him and the end of our town road, there's another road called Town Highway ninety-five. They don't break in the stone wall at Cook's Pond or anything.
I have, uh, documents and maps.
I, I think, I think those would be more beneficial at a hearing and not now because there's nothing, we can't make any decisions right now.
He owns all the property.
I think for, if you have a hearing, it would be nice to have a chronological order of, it was here, it wasn't here, it is here, it isn't here. I don't know, something like that, because you're gonna have to back up. You know, obviously, you could have three different people in here saying three different things and obviously you got three different maps, so which one's the right one?
And it's gonna have to be, the, the hearing process would, would also require, similar to what, I mean, I sat in on the Crown Point Road one. There'd have to be certified mail to all the abutters and, well, no, but not just John. It would be the, his, the surrounding properties around him. I mean.
The only abutters that are touching the road, like ferry owners.
No, anybody that abuts his property is.
The property.
The road.
No, I'm talking about the process of a hearing.
Right.
I'm talking about the process of a hearing.
Correct.
Because the process of a hearing, um, says that the abutters to it, not necessarily that it's on your road, but the abutters have to be notified of a road change. I mean, let's just suppose, and I have no idea, the, the board should go out there and walk because we've done that when we moved from class four to class three. It'd be good to have a site visit. But somebody could say that Town Highway ninety-six is on my land and it comes right next to John's land. And I don't know this, but, but I'm imagining something like that could take place. And then you'd say, okay, then that does give a little bit of a, of a history saying that there was a road that comes up near there and then there, that was the reason why. That doesn't mean that we don't wanna vote or have a hearing process to discontinue ninety-five. It just means that there's another road that, that hooked into it. It's kinda like Piper Road and it goes into Plains Road. I had a discussion with regional planning. They said, oh, Plains Road is now a main venue and it, and it, and it, um, it's been upgraded. I said to the girl, I said, what are you talking about? Plains Road's a dead end. She said, no, it's not. I said, oh, yes, it is. You have to get to Gulf Road and Piper Road before you get to Plains Road. She said, she said, oh, yeah.
Plus, I'd also like to understand, um, it stated that it's on the state map.
So it's.
So.
It's appeared on, um, the first map that I found it on was when they, when the town recognized for counting mileage to report to the state in the seventies. Until we, prior to the seventies, Cook's Pond Road was not even on the map.
Yeah, what, but what I'm getting at is if it's already on the state map somewhere, do we, as a town, can we just tell the state, oh, it's not there anymore?
Not without going through a hearing process.
No, you have to go through a hearing.
Right, that's what I'm getting, but even after the hearing, can we just tell the state that we decided this?
Well, you file a discontinuance. And then you, and then you notify the state.
And, and.
And you have to measure it. You have to be pretty thoughtful. I don't know if it's three rods or four rods, whatever the definition is. I don't know.
I just wanted to make sure that the state.
Where I was gonna go.
I've already got it on the map and that's, we're gonna have to make the decision.
I don't think it's a mistake.
Where I was gonna go is, we need the statute on this, Brandon. And i- i- you know, all, everything that's there, we have to follow that statute. I, I think, I think it's three hearings, isn't it, Dave?
Yes.
To, to remove a road.
The statute I sent during the first ferry road discussion. If you still have it in your.
The same.
Yep.
Twenty nineteen section.
Just, we just, we need to follow the, follow the rules. Paul, can you take over for just a moment? I need to excuse myself.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
A- absolutely. So we're, what, it, so Brandon, you're gonna, you're gonna give us that information and follow through. I, I, I don't wanna, I don't think anybody here wants to wait any longer than we have to. I don't know if we can get that figured out.
If it posts a hearing, uh, to start the process though, you would have to notify the abutters. So you'd need to get a list. You'd need to do your homework before the hearing. So you don't wanna, we don't wanna sit in a hearing and go, oh, wait a minute, we didn't notify whatever. So you need, there's a process.
Yep. So I'll gather all that information. We'll take copies of what you have over there. Is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah, because what we'll do for the hearing is we'll actually enter that in evidence.
Okay.
Obviously.
One of the things the statute talks about is that the petition or me needs to actually file a petition. I don't know whether the email that I sent to Brandon was sufficient. Ask the petition requesting whether to discontinue or decide.
I believe that it should be sufficient. I, I haven't seen a, a, like a template that somebody needs to use per statute. Have you, Ray?
Usually the person that wants the road to be discussed just writes a letter.
Yep.
And states to the board, the town manager, please have a hearing and the board makes a decision.
So it's not a petition as if it was wanting a change of bylaw. You gotta go get so many signatures in town.
Yeah, one takes one person writing a letter saying you want the road to be discussed.
And that's specific to roads and, and highway stuff, not necessarily in general, okay?
Exactly. I could write the letter and it could be on to my road.
Cause they know a change of bylaw at the planning commission or something and somebody wants to force that in, you gotta have a petition signed.
That's why you have three hearings.
We have, you have the same thing. You follow the same procedures at the planning commission for a petition. That's the thing. If they use the word petition and I'm like, it means different things to different people. So I just, whatever, it's in the highway bylaw, so make sure that that's.
State law just says petition isn't written as a petition. You don't have to have so many signatures.
The, the town would have to do its work though to make sure that the petition or, has valid information such as the, the road is entirely on his property and so forth. So we can't take, like, the ferry road thing is a lot different. I mean, we've got a, we've got an owner that happens to be a renter and one farmer says, oh, get rid of it. And the owner says, no, maybe not. So that's, that's a lot of landowners. In this case, it sounds like it's just one owner, so.
I think that's good.
Yep.
I'm back.
Really?
Thank you. So, so my question becomes, um, does the board want to, um, uh, make a motion to, to move into the hearing process on this? To instruct the town manager to bring, begin the process, notifications?
How long do you think it'll take to gather the information in order to get that off the ground? It's gonna take, I, you'd have to find out the law to say what is legally required of you to notice the abutters or whatever.
My recommendation honestly is just the next meeting, something on the agenda for a vote to, to, if you've got enough stuff.
Okay.
Or you feel that you're gonna have enough stuff in the timeframe. Cause I also want, you should also make sure whatever, you know, is the standard forty-five days, whatever. The highway stuff sounds like it might be different than.
We're just state law. We just follow state law and it's spelled right out. How many days notice? You have to get people and have a meeting scheduled up. Our part, they have to be.
Who you have to notify, all, all that stuff's in there.
It's all the same thing for the planning commission. It just might be different days is what I'm getting at, different amount of time.
Okay, so it'll be next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. That, okay?
You guys make a motion, vote on that or it's gonna?
We don't need to. It'll be at the next meeting.
It'll be on the agenda.
So we can get it done.
Yep. We, we're gonna gather information first and prepare for it and then we'll make the motion.
Have a hearing date, so we'll know better then.
We'll need the paper for the board to sign as well, warning the hearing.
Yes. Yes, everything.
Yep.
Have it all, have it all ready to go. If you would, please.
All right. If, if you can have everything done by that. If, if I know that it gets more involved, we can, we can do whatever.
Either way, there'll be an update on this.
That's exactly it.
Okay. Martin Memorial Hall roof, roofing project.
Um, so the project is completed. There were two changes as the project progressed. The motion the board made was for premium shingles, but, uh, when Connecticut River Roofing and I were talking about this, premium shingles weren't available. So we decided to move forward with pro shingles. Um, and since it was already on the schedule, I just decided to do that. And that work was three thousand dollars less. So the pro shingles are three dol- three, three thousand dollars cheaper than the premium shingles. And they have the same quality. Also, six pieces of plywood were replaced, each at seventy-five dollars a piece. Um, and that work was approved by the inspector as needing to be completed. So the net difference was two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And what we're looking to do here is shift that over to the West Weathersfield Fire Department Roofing Project because we've hit, um, budgetary increases over there. Not necessarily increases that we need to move forward with, but since the ceiling's already gonna be open and the roof is gonna be off, that's a good time to reorganize the wires for the electrical, um, and some of the plumbing. So that the inspector and Connecticut Roofing and I met, um, and we all agreed that this should be done at the same time. And then, uh, Connecticut River Roofing got pricing from Hennessy Plumbing, um, and electrician. And the budget's gonna go over between twenty-five hundred to five thousand. So I'd just like to shift that money.
Going over more than what we already voted on to spend over there?
Correct. But then we spent less at the Martin Memorial Hall project. I don't really know what that price is gonna be exactly. It's gonna be between twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. So I'm not looking for a vote tonight. But I'm just looking to hold this twenty-five fifty and reserve it for that. And if we use all of it over there, or if we go over budget even more, then I'd be looking for an amendment to the motion.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If, if we don't do anything with this money, where does it go right now? You, you, you didn't spend it all. Where does it go?
It goes back into the ARPA fund.
Okay. And so you don't even know if this is gonna be enough anyways. So my, my thing is, I, I'm not, I, I don't wanna, I wanna know what's going on over there. And I wanna motion, I wanna, I would make a motion on what that total would be. Sounds like you're, don't even know. So this is still going back in the ARPA. And if we vote later, which we're gonna have to do, we'll just vote out of the ARPA and the whole amount that we need, not, well, we got a little bit now and a little bit later, just, like, I, we're not losing this. It's not going anywhere. It's going back to ARPA. Right?
Yeah. It's, it's, it's not too big of a deal, but I did wanna give the board a heads up that, you know, we are looking to do that electrical and plumbing work in addition to the roof. Um, and we do have estimates to do that.
But you're gonna have to come back here and get us the vote to do that.
Well, I, 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 I guess the question then becomes to the board. We do know that there is a cost increase at the West Weathersfield. I agree with Paul now after hearing this, that, that probably the easiest thing to do is just dump this back in ARPA and then deal with that. How does the board feel about the increase in, in the, it's, it's in labor actually or, or the project? Because it's something they found that they think should be taken care of. Does the board support that?
I've been very careful to comment, but I'm gonna.
Go ahead.
Because my son-in-law's got to bid, but.
I got you.
This, I think they should be held as individual projects and this one's complete. If this one came in the way it did, I think it should be handled separately for bookkeeping purposes in addition to, you know, controlling whatever he did on this building. I think that money should be voted on to go back into ARPA funds. I think it should be viewed separately because it happened already and it's completed. Number two, the West Side project should not be labeled at this moment in time for the information that I know is a, it's merely a roofing project because the interior ceiling's coming down with wiring and plumbing and whatever. So it's not just about some roof replacement. So the scope has changed a little. That's all, that's as far as I'll go. But I would advise the board to view these projects as separately because they were bid separately. So clean up one, move on to another one. That's all fine. But the scope of the project that the other one has changed.
All right, so let's clean up this one first. Uh, do I hear a motion to move the twenty-five fifty, oh, right, twenty-five fifty? Twenty-five five fifty, uh, back to the ARPA, uh, fund.
Do, do, do we need to vote on this or automatically go back there?
It'll automatically go back in.
Well, it, it didn't go to the contractor. So I think you should, the bid, the bid was the, the money to give to the contractor. You didn't give it to him. I, I would suggest you put, you make the motion to put it back.
Okay.
So there's a couple of things. This twenty-five fifty is stuck in a motion for this project and this project's done. It's eight thousand dollars stuck in the small business grants still that we didn't completely use because the board voted to spend twenty thousand on that and we spent twelve. So between the two of them, we still have eight thousand dollars earmarked for this.
So I, I'll make a motion that we take two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars left over from the Martin Memorial Hall Roofing Project to go back into the ARPA funds for use later.
Go to your second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
I have no comment.
That, that just deals with that one issue for now. Any discussion from the board?
I, I don't think I, I don't wanna vote on the roofing projects because of the bid, that's all. I, I don't have anything to do with the company that did it, but I just, I just wanna be.
And this is, this is just money going back into ARPA, Dave, but that's up to you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's exactly right.
In addition, the work at the West Weathersfield Fire Department that is not roof, a roofing project, it was being treated separately. It's being handled by separate contractors.
I understand that. I, I think, I understand what Dave said. When you, when you take and move the money from here to there, then you're starting to co-mingle. And he's just trying to keep it, the bookwork square. It doesn't mean we're not gonna do it. We're, we're just keeping the bookwork straight. That's all he's trying to do. We have a motion in the second.
Finish this.
Did he have a question? Ray?
Yeah, usually it's treat them, just, usually you treat it as an add-on of a contract. So if you have an add-on and it's gonna cost you more money, then you come back to the board and say, I have fifty-five hundred dollars in electrical work and stuff. We found something wrong with the roof. You need to add this on. Do I have permission to do the work? And they would give you the more money.
Yeah, there's a couple of different ways that you can do it, all of which would be fine, honestly.
Okay, so this one here, any other discussion on this? Hearing done. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Twenty-five five fifty goes back into ARPA.
Okay.
From this project. And, and, well, thank the guy for, you know.
Yeah, and if I may, I, I would hold off until there's some information in front of us of the total price for the add-on for the West Weathersfield.
And I'm gonna, I, he, he brought up another thing, which is eight thousand dollars left over in another account. I'd like that on the next agenda to deal with that. I don't wanna get into that tonight. But, but we should, we should, that, we're not gonna do that again, so we should, we should, we should move that money as well. So that takes care of that. And then I, I think we're at a place where right now, we're waiting until that, you, you have a known figure, I guess, on, on the roofing project over at West Weathersfield?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I wanna get it done at the same time since, and have both the contractors there to be able to do the work. So it is between twenty-five hundred to five thousand. According to Connecticut River Roofing, it won't exceed five thousand. So I think we have what we need to move forward.
General consensus of the board, tell them move forward? Aye? I, I mean, I'm just, it's just a general consensus, Dave. I don't know if you wanna get involved with that or not.
The scope had changed, but, but I understood a little bit about it. Yes, I want it to move forward. I want all three to move forward.
Okay. Wendy and Kelly, you good with this moving forward? No, and we're gonna face an increase in cost over there, between twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollars. Okay. So you have a general consensus of the board that they're, to move forward with that and we'll fund it once we know what the bill is?
Thank you.
Okay? That make sense?
Yep.
Thank you. Dave, thank you for your, open, I know, I know that it is family connected and, you know, you get to handle that, how, how you choose.
Well, no, I just, I don't have any financial interest. I don't have any, I don't own anything.
And I know that too. I, I would not have a problem with you voting on these issues, but it, it purely is your choice and, and it's, it's always appearance. Doesn't matter what it looks like, but the appearance is important. And thank you for understanding that. Town reappraisal, draft RFP?
Yeah, so we have an RFP to do the townwide reappraisal in your packet. And what, what would occur after the meeting tonight is the RFP would be advertised and it would be advertised tomorrow. We would be looking for sale proposals back in our office by eleven AM, prevailing time on June second. And then we would move forward with a public bid opening, at which point all of the bids would be open. They'd be read aloud with the town clerk. And then from there, we log all of the bids, all of the pricing, the companies, and we would present those findings to the select board at your second meeting, the first, I think, I believe the first meeting in June. And that will give us the information that we need to know how much it's gonna cost to do a reappraisal, how many hours it'll be, the cost per, the average cost per parcel. Yeah, we're confident in the RFP and it's been reviewed and that's where we're at.
Okay. You need anything on that tonight?
Just a heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tax collector report?
Wait a minute, I got a question.
Oh, go ahead, Dave. Sorry.
So, did you officially get the state letter requiring a reappraisal?
Not yet.
Well, that troubles me. Number two, John had mentioned in the seat here, like a meeting or two ago, said that the state was gonna fix all this, so we didn't have to.
Well, it's at the legislature. It hasn't made its way to the senate yet. So we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. There's, there's a bill out there, but.
But in committee or something, I don't know. Because, I mean, the last information that you had or you shared with us was that something like sixty-five percent of the state needs to be reappraised.
Correct.
Question.
What I'm looking to do, Dave, is really, I wanna know how much money this is gonna cost. And this is, this is gonna give us the information that we need and the amount of time that it's gonna take to be prepared from the case that we do need to move forward.
Go ahead.
Two things. I, I agree with what Dave said. We don't have a letter, so why, but to that point, I guess we need it. And we don't necessarily have to vote on anything, even when we get the RFPs. And if we decide not to do something, the RFPs might go away after ninety days or whatever. We do, we already got everything done. But at least we have an idea of what it's gonna cost. My other question on that, I asked, I asked Steve Hyer this, but I didn't get this answer. What if we don't get that letter and we don't do this right yet? And we go on to the next year and the CLA is now back within limits? We don't have to do anything, right?
There, there's, there's a lot of questions, you know. I'm just looking for answers to them.
So we're, we're how many months away? So, so I personally don't mind going out just to see. I'm, I'm curious of what this would cost the town too.
I think it'd be good to know.
I think some people that are, we wanna reappraisal, we wanna appraisal, might be like, oh, wow. And I know, yeah.
Well, not just that. We, we have for many years put money aside for reappraisal. But, and I, for many years, have thought that it was enough. And it, it wasn't until recent that it, it seemed to shine a light on the fact that it isn't enough. So how much, how much are we off?
We really don't know if we're off.
Exactly.
I'm personally okay if we go out with the RFP.
Yeah, I'm good with the RFP going.
Just to see.
So did you, so, so you're, this is for interest only because the, the last time you talked about this would be that you called the state tax department and you got at least a response saying that towns can do their own? That was, that's a little, that's a little weird, but I would like that in writing.
Yep.
I learned that Nate Stoddard did Baltimore's. I learned that Baltimore's now is done and the properties are anywhere between fifty and a hundred percent over. I know it's scary for a lot of people there right now. I saw the print. So, you know, I don't have a problem with finding that out. I don't think, I don't think what you said, Paul, is gonna come true. Like, like I think the trigger is eighty, right?
No, I was just.
No, no, I know that. But here's what we, I, I've never gotten the answer to this. So, so whatever I've learned. The CLA is viewed by the tax department on five years. I did learn that. So it's not just one year that does it. So two thousand and eighteen is coming off. The sales that are registered, the, and actually they have to be what they call good sales. Meaning that if I transfer my land into a trust, that's not a sale. It has to be to an entirely different buyer. So the two thousand and eighteen numbers that were locked in now come off in the two thousand or even two thousand seventeen, so the two thousand twenty-two actually appear. So it's a five-year average. We just, maybe it's a totally different subject, but I think all of this ties together in a bow. We just went through the Board of Civil Authority meeting where Floanne said there were somewhere, and I counted them, just under twenty-five hundred voters in town. Twenty-four seventy-eight, of which about three hundred are now being questioned either way. But, and we never really got identified how many new voters that was. But we learned that, that that's a four-year, a four-year, the total number of three hundred voters that are in question are four years' worth. So on average, there are seventy-five voters a year that kind of change Weathersfield. And if you assumed that there are two voters in each home, that's thirty-seven homes. That's really not a lot, which is the whole narrative, which I've tried, trying to find out, of how many actual transition of homes are actually driving this train through the CLA. And no one's ever really been able to get their arms around that. Is this really just being driven by a sale of, let's say, we have sixteen, Floanne said this on the BCA meeting. There was sixteen hundred and forty-nine or something like that parcels in town. So if you just, and I got a little bit of conflicting reports from Barb Thomas. She said five hundred had changed hands in one year. And I said, that's just not right. She said, oh, wait a minute, it's really a hundred and fifty. So in, in, in one second, it went from five hundred to a hundred and fifty.
And even that's high, isn't it?
I think so. Well, of those hundred and fifty, there could be people that are putting them in trusts. So it's not a good sale that gets locked into a sale. Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know. I, I, I'm okay, I guess, with doing the reap. Didn't John also say that the information that he had, just because you sign up for reappraisal, you might be three years waiting?
Yeah, it wouldn't be done until two thousand twenty-five.
I don't know who to reach out to, but it would be a really good idea for you to try to touch base with the Chair of Baltimore. They don't have a town manager. They don't have anything. And find out the cost of what Baltimore just went through. I think they have about six hundred properties and that is complete. The list is final. And Nate Stoddard did it. So he probably, I don't know if he, I don't know if it's public information. He might tell you how much he charged. It must have been Nimrek that did it.
So we have sixteen hundred and twenty-one parcels.
Yep. I think a little more than that because Floanne said something about land or whatever. I don't know. Did you remember, Wendy? I, I think it was.
I don't know, but if that's not the night number, you better figure it out because that's what's in the RFP.
Yeah, no.
Oh.
We're all set. We, this is verified.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have sixteen hundred and twenty-one parcels. The last reappraisal was in two thousand and eight.
Do you have the ability to run up what's on the reserve account for appraisals on your computer? Do either you or Olivia have that?
Two eighty.
Two eighty? So if you do the math, Mike, what you were driving at, who's got a calculator? Take sixteen hundred and fifty. Let's imagine that there's a few more properties. And divide that into two hundred and eighty thousand. And I guarantee you, there's not enough money for a reappraisal.
What, what are the numbers?
So it's two hundred and eighty thousand divided by, let's say sixteen forty. Cause that's the, that's the, that's gonna be the per parcel.
Two hundred and eighty thousand divided by sixteen forty?
Yep.
That's only a hundred and seventy, seventy-three.
That's, that's the doll, that's the dollar amount per appraisal, per property. And I guarantee you, that's not gonna be enough money.
Not even close. Not, not even in the, it's about a third.
Somebody walking around with a clipboard? So, so I just, my, my, I just had my house reappraised for some bank financing stuff that I did. It was seven hundred and fifty dollars just from the bank to do that.
And that's cheaper than hiring somebody individually.
So that was seven hundred and fifty dollars I paid the appraisal guy out of Claremont for the bank.
I don't think it's gonna be that high, but I guarantee it's probably gonna be double what we have. I'll, I'll bet you it's at least four, four fifty, five hundred.
Let's get the RFPs and see.
We could guess all day.
No, let's, let's, let's do the RFP and find the timeout.
Yeah, everybody's saying that it's being done. And I'm like, I, I haven't actually heard this. I was like, but I'm just letting you know, there's a, there's a good rumor going around town that this is being, it is being done this year and that, that's like set in stone. I was like, I haven't heard that. Okay, so, so I, no, I'm just, just saying that.
People here, everything.
We have a very large water cooler in Weathersfield.
If, if I were to guess, I'd say one fifty to two hundred per parcel on average.
Really? Okay. Let's get the RFP and see what it says.
If it's not that, you owe us pizza.
If it is that, you owe me pizza.
Alright, I buy you a pizza.
Somebody's buying pizza.
I don't know how it can be in print for that, for that low.
I don't, I don't either. Not today. Maybe two or three years ago, Dave, but not today.
We're gonna learn something because people are gonna be walking around with a clipboard. They're gonna be taking the existing material out of the Lister's office and they're gonna put that to your site, every single parcel. How much land you have, what your building size is.
It's a total guess on my part. I just figured I'd guess along with you guys.
Alright, well, let's see where it comes in as.
Yeah, do the RFP.
Okay.
Tax collector report?
Alright, so on April seventeenth, the board requested that we provide the status of our delinquent taxes and agreements. The last town report showed that in FY twenty-two, we had two hundred and ninety thousand in delinquent taxes outstanding on our books. It's important to note that we've been working to decrease the delinquencies on our books since FY twenty. And it takes a couple of years for it to fully clear out of our reporting. So for example, on like July first, if we had two ninety outstanding on our books, it's gonna be like that on our books until the end of the year for it to clear out. And we had some that were coming off of our books between fiscal years, which is why the number was pretty high. As of April twenty-seventh, we have thirty-three thousand in delinquent taxes on our FY twenty-three books, which is an eighty-eight point three percent decrease since the recent annual report that was distributed. The annual report that was distributed contained delinquencies between July first and June thirtieth. We held tax sales in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. And between the tax sales that were completed and the agreements that were made per policy, it takes, like, forget it, it takes a couple of years for that to work out. For example, in twenty twenty, we had a hundred and thirty-four delinquencies totaling over three hundred thousand on our books. As of right now, we have thirty-one total delinquencies. And of these thirty-one delinquencies, eight of these delinquencies made agreements per policy. And of these eight agreements, three of those have defaulted. Of the remaining twenty-two that we have not made agreements with, the total delinquency is sixty-one twenty and the average delinquency is two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Delinquencies within that twenty-two range from, some of them are two or three dollars, some of them are eight hundred dollars. So our next step is basically to issue notices that we will be moving forward with a tax sale on all properties that are outstanding, that have not made delinquencies or your, that have not made agreements or your agreement became delinquent. So we'll be issuing those letters soon. I did contact our tax sale attorney last week to arrange an appointment to review these. Generally what happens is, once you issue a notice, a lot of people come in and they pay their back taxes. Some of them may not know that they have taxes that are delinquent. So then the, it'll, the, the number of delinquencies will shrink and then we'll send another letter out, another letter. And we'll come up with a list. And then from that list, we'll advertise those in the newspaper per law and then have set a date for a tax.
You said some of these are pretty small amounts, two or three dollars, you mentioned?
We're not gonna waste the paper for that.
I, I was gonna say, what is, where's your cutoff for sending out a, a tax sale notice?
Well, there is, my hands are pretty tied for law and policy that it doesn't, like it's, if it's a dollar, but you have to use common sense. You're not gonna spend a lot of money on legal fees.
Can't you just send them a letter? Tell them that they owe it?
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm getting at is, is do you have in your head at least some number that you're looking at? You say like, like, when we get to this point, I, I'm just gonna send a letter saying, you know what, you underpaid by a certain amount, you know.
Does the GLC already have something too, or we?
The BCA usually gets rid of things like ten dollars a month or something like that.
There's a certain number, they just vote them all out. You say, oh, it's not worth it.
It's a corrective measure.
There's already a number there for us.
It's like seventy or eighty dollars worth a year or something like that.
Yes.
But there's a dollar amount that got voted on a long time ago. I'd have to check with Floanne.
I would continue to send letters on those ones and say, hey, you know, you're gonna come in and square up on your taxes. But generally, it's the one setter, a couple of thousand dollars.
Sure. That, that's understood.
Yep.
Okay. Ever, any questions for the?
Oh, I do. We've already been heated on this on the phone, Mr. Town Manager. And there's a bet going on.
Pizza? More pizza?
No, no, no. This is dinner at Jesse's.
Oh.
With it, with it without buns.
Alright, where do we go?
Are we all going?
What do we got?
Okay. According to the town report, and he claimed it was a mistake, so I'd like the mistake to be at least not tonight, don't need it tonight, don't need anything tonight. In our town report on, in twenty fiscal year ending twenty-one, the outstanding delinquent taxes were two hundred and ninety thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. That was on six thirty twenty-one. On six thirty twenty-two, the delinquent taxes for the town report were two hundred and ninety thousand, thirty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. The exact dollar amount, the exact penny amount. That just can't be true. Now, hold on, let me finish. That just can't be true.
That is a struggle. That is a struggle.
That is a little more than a struggle, to be exactly one year apart and to have the same penny amount of delinquencies. That's troubling. Uh, again, what's troubling is this, for me, not any time in my any service of in Weathersfield. Has the delinquent taxes shrunk to the level that Brandon is now claiming, at thirty three thousand dollars, and I'll try to measure this. The town is the tax agency for about eight and a half million dollars, okay? Six and a half for the school. A million and a half for the general fund, and a million for the town uh um highway. Now. The school is fully funded every single year, so it's impossible to get delinquent taxes with the school, because we are the collector. The solid waste is fully funded through a fee system, it's impossible to get anything behind there. The highway is fully funded by law, by every single year, so it's impossible to get anywhere past there. The only department that is within the realm of delinquent taxes, because it's a collection agency, is the general fund. So my question to Brandon, and he and he gave me the answer that I just, it was impossible for me to get my arms around, was. According to this report, since two thousand and twenty. And I'm assuming that the either the FY twenty one number of the exact amount wasn't exactly accurate, and I'm willing to live with that. But at some moment, we have to get our arms around what is accurate, which would be the FY twenty two, two nine, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I didn't ask anybody for a calculator, because I did it myself. I would like to find out what happened to two hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty three dollars and eighty four cents. Between two thousand and twenty. And April twenty seventh of two thousand and twenty three. And you can ask Steve, I I would like to see an income. Because this money had to be paid by the residents that were delinquent. And it and according to Brandon, it was expended, but it would have to be expended in that same time period as well.
That's not how it works.
Well, like, and I keep getting that answer, and and it doesn't, it doesn't wash with me.
Explain it real quick. To answer your question about the report that was in the annual reports. Um that was an oversight error, what happened is, they just put the PDF from. The last annual report into the folder for Doolittle's. It wasn't too far off, I can give you those numbers at the at year end twenty two. On the two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars that, like, came in, and it was cash, and where did it go? Um, so what happens is. And let's say F, let's just use FY twenty two for an example. We anticipate receiving one million in revenue and spending one million dollars in expenses. We didn't receive a hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty two, it's delinquent. But it's already, we've already spent one million dollars, so there's a hundred thousand dollars in outstanding. Delinquent taxes on our books in FY twenty two. Then we go into FY twenty three, million dollars in revenue, a million dollars in expense. We s- we receive a million, we expend a million. We still have a hundred thousand in FY twenty two outstanding on our books. We also collect a hundred thousand dollars from a tax, from holding tax sales in FY twenty three. Now that one hundred thousand dollars comes in, it clears out FY twenty two, it's already been expended anyway, because we had a million in expenses. So it's just.
But you're but you're but you're but you're, and I warned you about this at this meeting. Um, you're, I don't know, this is, you you're you're leaving out a really big fact, which is the fourth quarter tax payment of five seventeen hasn't happened yet. Which is, which means that approximately. Two million dollars hasn't come in yet, I don't know anybody, I'm sorry, I'm sure there is, but yeah, it does factor in, I think it does.
It it doesn't, so if if you anticipate receiving a million dollars and expending a million. It doesn't matter when the tax payments come in, it's an accrual based.
And I spoke with an accountant today about the accrual system, and he gave me the lowdown. He said, yes, but all of what you're saying, what you're trying to say is true, except for this fact. That the money does come in at a certain time, these delinquencies do. But what happens is, the taxpayers that go on each subsequent year are paying a little more to make up for the delinquencies that didn't pay. But when you have that day of reckoning, like you have made happen. It, the rubber does meet the road, the money had to come into the bank.
It did.
And and so I would like to see, after the March seventeenth, or whenever our taxes are due, within reason, like maybe, I don't know. Cause, cause that income has to become, let me ask you another question. So just because our due date on the tax quarterly payment is the seventeenth of May, and I don't know what it is, it's somewhere around there. Do do residents still have until June thirtieth to pay that bill with the with no penalty?
I I have to look into that, I'm not that deep into the weeds, so I'll I'll have to look with Suzanne tomorrow.
So that's why I, that's why I said, does everybody understand where the question ought to just ask? So it's kinda like, you know, if you get a bill in the mail, and you have thirty days to pay it, you don't pay it until the twenty ninth day, but I always thought that, you know, I. Come in and pay it, because the the town office has always said, get it stamped by that certain day, or it doesn't count.
You you do wanna get it stamped, and you wanna get it.
Whatever date they put out there on the road, it the, if you don't have it paid, the next day you've got interest.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, it is?
That I do know.
And that's for thirty days, and if it goes another thirty days, it gets another four percent, and if you, if it's the fourth quarter. When that hits you at the fourth quarter, you get the penalty with it.
That date matters.
So you should be able to tell, within a reasonable amount, let's say by the end of May, somebody's gonna be able to have what the income is. I'm hoping this is gonna happen, because you have collected this money, I'm not believing that you spent two hundred and fifty six thousand, I'm sorry, I'm not believing it. And you said, well, Steve said, I said, I'm sorry, I'm not believing him either.
We didn't spend it. We didn't spend it when it came in.
But but you gotta understand historical purposes here, we we have had, you know this, Mike, we have had delinquencies. Of these amounts of money. For as long as I can remember, and we have had interest and penalties. That have been separated from the principal amounts of those monies. So, this happens to be, it's good news, cause I'm not saying the money is missing. What I'm saying is, the money's gonna show up on a ledger as finally being paid.
It is. Which frees up our reserves, is what it does, because when you, when when you're looking at it from a cash flow situation. Let's say, like I was saying last year, let's say we had zero in delinquencies prior to FY twenty two. But then in FY twenty two, we spent a million, we collected nine hundred thousand, have a hundred thousand outstanding, go into FY twenty three. It's a perfect world, collect a million, expend a million, receive an additional hundred thousand. That goes back into FY twenty two, clears out the delinquents, uh, the hundred thousand outstanding on our books. But in order for us to get from FY twenty two into FY twenty three, and we spent that hundred thousand. It reduced our cash flow and our buying power and our reserves.
Correct.
If if you're saying what is true, if you're saying the money is spent and gone. Then I think we're in for a bad news awakening within the next couple of years budget. Because there's not gonna be that fallback of, number one, any interest and penalties, if you shrunk this thing down to thirty three thousand, it's gonna be a headache on the budget process. A big one.
We flushed it out this year by reducing the amount of interest and penalty revenue.
Well, so so far. Be, I I I, cause I I I understand what you're talking about, and I agree that right now, as of the, I think you said the twenty eighth of April. Uh, you're in this this place where we only have a a small amount of delinquency. But like, Dave is also correct, that the fourth quarter hasn't come in yet. Now that, it's not a matter, you've, you're assuming X number of dollars is gonna come in, and we're gonna spend X number of dollars. And and so you're you're saying spot on on what your number is, that we're on target, where we're supposed to be. But what may, I think, what Dave is talking about is, what if all that money doesn't come in? And that comes back to what you just got done saying, now you got a hundred thousand dollars that has to come out of your your bank.
And if you look at the town reports, historically, the fourth quarter or the last year's payment is always the largest, for one reason, and then people finally pay. But historically, like, within that two hundred and ninety thousand, if you, I don't have the book in front of me, but I. I pretty much, I think I pretty much read it, there was a hundred and sixty thousand on that last quarter.
But what I'm saying is, he's already accounted for that money to come in. And and already accounting for it to be spent.
Because that's the way you do it.
That's the way you do it, correct.
And and if there's a time, and Steve and I will be able to see this well in advance. If there's a time that we come in and we say, hey, we have cash flow issues, we need a tax anticipation though. That's because we have too much delinquencies on our books, or we borrowed too much from our reserves, or. There's many different scenarios.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mix the reserve accounts with the regular annual budgeting process.
We don't do that.
Anyway, I would like to see whatever's gonna happen when this fourth quarter comes in, as far as what the money went out, you've got the bank on a quarterly records. And then what has actually come in.
One one thing you said, Dave, was the money had to come into the bank, and I'm I'm agreeing with you, the money had to come into the bank. But the money had to come out of the bank too, to pay the bills.
Well, yeah, but not on that year, so if you imagine it on that particular year, which Brandon is is drawing this picture in a very tight window. He's saying from February of, or from two thousand and twenty to now, it's April of two thousand and twenty three, that all this happened. This tidal wave of of actually collecting, that hasn't happened before from us.
And it did happen during that window, and I sent you the proof that of the document of our.
No, so so where I was going with that would be that it didn't get spent anyway, because look at what we had on that one day in February of two thousand and twenty. Two, the town collected a hundred and thirty five thousand, it's tax sale, that's real money. That was not, that was from old money bills.
Correct.
That wasn't from a new quarterly payment or dropping out of the sky on us, that was in addition, that was in addition to what?
That was from years.
No, 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 oh, yeah, 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 but, but nevertheless, on that one day in February of two thousand and twenty two. There was the check.
And. We used fifty thousand dollars to reduce taxes in the. In the town budget last year, we used some of that money, and then we used the rest of it. Um, so that sixty nine thousand four hundred for the allowance for doubtful accounts has.
Yeah, but that's different from delinquent, that was a whole different account.
Well, the delinquencies cleared off of our books, what happens is stuff comes on, stuff comes off, goes on, off, on, off, all throughout the years. So if if you're looking for me to trace that back, we're gonna have to hire like an independent consultant, that's extremely time consuming. Um, I can give a.
You've 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 drawn a really tight window here, you said from two thousand and twenty to April of two thousand and twenty three, that's not a long period of time.
And our delinquencies shrunk to thirty three thousand during that time.
From an aggressive tax policy.
From just the tax poli-
No, just the one.
The tax policy and the law, that's what we. I mean. Do we wanna collect delinquent taxes, or do we not wanna? I guess I need to know.
Well, the policy is, no, 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 you and I also said that there, I know, I think Cavendish and Baltimore, both at the end of their quarters. They noticed their residents right away, they don't let this happen, no, I don't want it to happen. The policy, I don't wanna change the policy.
So the policy's working, um.
Olivia, did, I'm I'm sorry, just quickly, did we lose Zappa?
I don't know why the Zoom closed out.
Okay, the Zoom closed, but.
Zoom closed, but it's gonna take us, like, it's supposed to take a while, like thirty seconds before, okay.
Okay, oh, that's fine.
So. I'm okay, we might, let's let's move on.
Okay. Uh, is is there any other reporting that needs to come in on this, Dave, at this point?
No, cause you gotta wait for that fourth quarter payment, and then then I'll try to get updated.
But I I would, I think conversations like this are good, because we get to discuss the finer details of a very complicated. Financial situation when it comes to taxes.
Well, I'd like to move, you know, if if we're so close to this, and it turns out that we're so close, it would really pay to move on to a cash basis. And that, let's just call the chips the way they are, and that would be like zero budgeting, and anything that we really wanted to do, and let's fund money into the reserve accounts. It it makes it cleaner, that's all. Um, you know, and and to follow, let the manager, who, it doesn't matter who it is, any management, follow the policy about collecting like it does, and. We don't wanna get trapped into making doubtful accounts, that's called a tax sale.
I I would, I would wanna ask Steve that question about.
Well, I think it, I'm totally. Okay with investigating a cash accounting system, when I got here, it was an accrual system. So let's look at the different types of systems we can use, and if we wanna make a switch. After we discuss it and determine that it's the best thing to do, I don't mind.
In the end, we're gonna end up in the same place.
It's gonna be the same thing, so. But I mean.
But we might, we might understand it better, I don't, I I guess, I don't, I don't know.
Decision making might be different, though, on a cash basis.
Okay. Definitely include Steve in this conversation.
Yep.
Um, appointments?
Looks like we have two, right, for Veterans Memorial?
Veterans Memorial.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments of Allison Roth and Mark Richardson to the Veterans Memorial. Committee.
I hear a second.
Yes.
Motion's been made in second to appoint two people to the Veterans Memorial Committee, Allison Roth, Mark Richardson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Um, approve the warrant.
I'll make the motion that we approve the warrant for meeting of May first, twenty twenty three. Uh, general fund payroll is fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety seven dollars and sixty five cents, operating expense ninety one thousand, four hundred and seventy nine dollars and four cents. Highway fund payroll is eight thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars and ninety two cents, operating expense. It's fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty three dollars and ninety three cents. Solid waste management payroll is one thousand, eight hundred and thirty nine dollars and eighty six cents, operating expenses eleven thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars and eleven cents. Library payroll is two thousand, sixty dollars and forty seven cents, it looks like there is an operating expense for two hundred and seventy four dollars and seventeen cents. Uh municipal road grant, uh seventy eight dollars and forty six cents. Our roofing project is thirty one thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty six cents. For grant totals, a payroll of twenty seven thousand, thirty five dollars and ninety cents, and operating expense a hundred and forty nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty seven cents.
I hear a second.
Yes.
Motion's been made in second, uh, discussion, Kelly, you had had a question online, did that get answered? The question you had asked us in in, uh, asked of the town manager.
I don't remember.
Uh, um, Brandon, you had responded.
Something was missing from the.
Yeah, he added it.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, and that is in here?
All the payroll, yeah, the payroll was all missing, and the first one that he sent out.
There was like a technology.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just wanna verify that it was corrected and it's here. Any questions or discussion on the warrants? Hearing none, all in favor of the warrant, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, any other business that can be conducted?
I I just got a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if, when do we decide what our tax rate is, is that something that we're still waiting for from our listers? To get some information fro- for?
It's it's typically in June, June or June or July.
Generally, the first week in July.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're still.
Where are we on the grand list, is there, are they?
Uh, Nate Stoddard said there's a couple of things to complete, but we're we're good to go.
Are we on, are we on time with it?
Yeah, according to Nate Stoddard, we are.
Okay.
Has he given you any other information?
Any other information or no?
No total on the grand list compared to last year's?
We'll have that information soon, I I know that a couple of solar arrays have been added to the grand list.
Okay.
I hate to ask, I just have one, I I I hate to go back on anything, but I just have one thing, I just wanted to. But I had for a thought, Brandon, it's all right to address him. What do most towns do as far as cash versus accrual, cause I know accrual tends to give a better um performance basis. And cash tends to be easier to do, but, so I'm just curious, overall, do you know what the other towns do, because. Profit and losses usually are a lot easier to do with accrual, and I know that cash is just a simpler form of, I, you know.
See, cash is simpler.
But it doesn't.
On its face, but it's more complicated, it would it would be heavier on the accounting side.
Right, so, okay, so backtrack, so what do most towns do?
Accrual.
Okay, because you get better.
For a month, though, so in Massachusetts, which I don't wanna say Massachusetts is.
I'm just saying, you've dealt with other town managers and stuff, and I didn't know if you knew in in our local area. I was just curious, because it that's, it's actually a big deal to change, and I'm assuming that Steve likes the accrual, just for the fact that it does help with the performance.
I'm not, I'm not sure what he likes or not, um, and I'm not sure what.
And I'll I'll stop the subject there, I'm just curious what other towns do.
Yeah, and I'll get that information prepared.
Okay, any other business?
Move to your second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
Thank you all.
Where do I sign?
Right here.
It's a good question.
Yeah, just, it's a real tough thing to change if.
Thanks, guys.
Used to something.
Guys, have a great night.
You look tired.